Welcome to week three of the Online James Study. Yeah, my name is Nate Anderson and I am helping us discuss this tonight and I look forward to it. Thankful that Will lets me do one of these a time, seems like one week. I enjoy it a lot in preparing and kinda like I was saying a little bit ago, the discussion and various aspects of my life, including the sermon that Tim preached last week about Samson, kind of all tied together for me with this wisdom and submission peace and friendship with the world too, the whole, the whole kinda thing. For me, this week we were, we are in James three verses thirteen through eighteen, which is kinda the, the last teaching section grouping in that chapter three, as well as the first, what is it, the first twelve verses? Or ten? Ten or twelve, somewhere in there, sorry, I might have been, I might have gotten ahead of ourselves there. In James, in chapter four. And, and then also Proverbs one through three, if anybody read the, read the first three chapters of Proverbs, that was kind of a lot the same around wisdom, which I thought was excellent. Anybody have any general topics, discussion, thoughts? Insights, anything that we can start off with to, to discuss about it? I don't see anybody talking, if you're talking, I can't hear anybody, so. Yeah, jumping into this, my, my section in chapter three is titled, "Two Kinds of Wisdom", starting with at verse thirteen. This true wisdom versus false wisdom. What do you guys? What do you guys see as the? The signs, the signals, the what do you call characteristics of, you know, knowing, you know, somebody with true wisdom or false wisdom and kind of how do we, how do we decipher? What do we sort of say, kinda walk through that when, cause I, I guess it's common to, to always think you have the true wisdom as yourself, so how do you, how do we, how do we see that? What are the characteristics of that?
I see true wisdom as pure, I see false wisdom as foolish wisdom, things that don't make sense, they're foolish.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I had written down pure also. I like that a lot and the, and the foolishness. You know, we talked to the last week and, and the week before, kind of in general terms about the the deeds and the, the faith and deeds and the wisdom, you know, and verse thirteen talks a lot about that too, let him show it by his good life, by his good life, by deeds done in humility that comes from wisdom. I thought that, that was very powerful to me. What else you guys have about a regarding wisdom?
The foolish wisdom is both full wisdom too.
Right. Yeah, I, yeah, what does it say? Fourteen, but if you harbor bitter envy and selfish ambition, oh, well, the end of thirteen, done in humility that comes from wisdom, yes. That, I, Dean, I like that point of what a filter or a screen to check it as far as motives, which is not always clear for looking at other people's, but for yourself, you know, looking at those motives, the humility. You know, I think that that can say a lot about people's heart and that, that wisdom behind it for sure. What were you gonna say Cindy?
Um, I was just gonna say that, yeah, same as you just said a little bit, like personally, like looking into your own heart, it's kinda like true wisdom could be a replica of like what kind of fruit that you're bearing as far as like gentleness, humbleness, grace. And then, you know, the opposite as Tamara was saying earlier, how foolishness could be the fruit that you would bear with false wisdom.
Right, yeah, the fruit, the fruits of the spirit is one, is a note that I wrote down. As a, as a sign. Somebody else have something on that? Or is that you Tamara?
I think that a lot of pride has to do with the foolishness too.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great point, that was one of the the correlations I made with Pastor Tim preaching on Samson this last weekend. And hearing that pride and you kinda arrogance or doing it on your own, that was one of the tie-ins that I, that I thought on that as well, I think that was Lynn that was talking there. Yeah, what else? What else you guys got on characteristics or filters, tests regarding wisdom and, and I think we talked about the fruit, what else?
Feel free to unmute yourselves.
In mine, it shows. In mine, it shows that i- in the Bible that I'm reading here, it says that whenever, oh gosh, I lost it for a second when I moved this around, people are jealous or selfish, they cause trouble and do all sorts of cruel things. As far as a good way to tell if somebody's leading from one of those jealousy or selfishness. It's not, wisdom can't operate in there.
Right, yeah, I think you're referencing sixteen, but the NIV that I'm looking at here, it says for where you have envy and selfish ambition, there you find disorder in every evil practice. Yeah, that's a definitely a sign of that motive behind it.
That's a lot of Facebook right there.
Yeah, yeah, it's true. I think, you know, Will's challenged us lately to, you know, get our, look at the Bible as our own. You know, first, and that, that can be challenging, I'm definitely guilty of, you know, turning on podcasts and then seeing what I'm reading through those eyes of that other person, which can be helpful and as a tool, but the challenge that I've felt from him personally is to you know, read it first and through the filter of the Bible and the rest of the scriptures, and then I guess for me, it helps me to be less susceptible to swayed by, you know, another person. But at the same time, I mean, having discussions around it and having fruits of the spirit evident in humility and, and, and in those other items, I mean, those are ways to know that you're in a good spot with, you know, hearing true wisdom and be better prepared possibly going forward to, to read it through a different lens, that might be helpful. You know, so you have to kinda balance all that.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's funny too Nate, that you mentioned. Excuse me, that you mentioned, that you mentioned podcasts, you know, I mean, you, you know, I listen to podcasts quite a bit and stuff. And one that I happened to be listening to today, it was, they were actually talking, they were tired, they were, they were talking to some people that had, that had gotten out of the Seventh Day Adventists. And what actually the, what actually helped them in their getting out from underneath some really crazy bad teaching and stuff there was that they actually started reading their Bible for themselves rather than just taking what they were hearing from the pulpit as, as the word and started, started, you know, started reading, reading for themselves. And, you know, goes back to the analogy that I've heard a few times and I've, I've also propagated it a few times too of that the whole thing of when, when people are being trained to spot counterfeit money, they don't handle counterfeit money, they only handle genuine. And so they're so familiar with the genuine and the, and the true, that if the false crops up, the tiniest little bit of off just sticks out like a sore thumb and they, they spot it just instantly.
Yeah, and I'm sure that breaks down somewhere regarding this, but at the same time, like the, I mean, that, that part behind that, that I like, I've heard you say that before Jason, is the, to me, it's the study, the, I mean, to, to really do that, you would have to really, 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 really know what the exact genuine real thing looks like. And be dedicated or committed to studying that continuously to stay sharp and to be ready when you see the one, I mean, you'd see, I mean, I don't know, you're right, you probably see, if you're looking for counterfeit bills, I, I don't know that I've ever seen one, maybe I have, I have no idea, you know? And that's the problem, you know, whereas, you know, relating that back to you know, following Christ. Yes, seeing that and knowing wisdom or false true wisdom or false wisdom. I mean, I think, I think what you're saying is being so plugged in that you have that backbone and that knowledge of the, of the real deal, that when it starts to be a little bit different, you, you can spot it. And your, and your default is that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, I was thinking of I'll, I'll shut up here a second, I was thinking of the, the temptation of Jesus as an example, like you know, he, he pulled out the scripture and what an example, I can't see who's trying to talk, is that you Donna?
I was gonna say the same thing that
Yeah, go ahead.
That Satan tempted Christ with scripture, but it
Right.
Didn't, he tweaked it, and it's just like what Jason was saying, you need to know it, just like the counterfeit bills, you've gotta know the real thing to be able to fight it and, and be able to discern what's, what's the whole truth? And how it lines up with scripture, not just taking pieces of it, and that's what most false religions do.
Right, yeah, that's powerful what you said about him using the scripture because the, I mean, the scripture use out of context was used as leverage in the temptation against Jesus and, and even though it was scripture out of context to to Jesus, he knew so well, you know, the, the full story that he was able to, you know, know, know what to say back to him and, yeah, that's a high, that's a high mark. I guess for me, you know, that's, that's a mark that is a continuous chasing after or, you know, in a high calling, but, you know, don't hear, you know, you're not gonna hit the mark, so, so stop, it's just a, you know, get a, you know, have a plan to move forward to, to know that better, Jason, you got something to say, you unmuted yourself?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna, you know, even just playing off of that, even going clear back to the temptation of Eve in the garden, it was, Satan simply said, did God really say?
Right.
And put that, just that little planted, that little tiny seed of doubt in her of if she was actually understanding what God really said.
Yeah, surely you will not die.
Right.
You know, he totally
Yeah.
twisted it, yeah.
Right. So the, the fruits of the spirit, I think are the biggest and the humility, I think are the biggest signs to me of the, of the true wisdom. And then some lesser counterfeit or I don't know, whatever, you know, or, I mean, the easy ones are the opposites, those are easy, it's a little bit more difficult, I find it when it's just a small difference. I think that that's, that can be a trap in temptation or sin or even following the wrong thing. Yeah.
You said fruits of the spirit and what? You said fruits of the spirit.
The humility behind it, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, thanks, I just.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was looking that up again, it's verse thirteen, who is wise and understanding among him, let him show it by his good life, by deeds done in humility that comes from wisdom, that part.
Now that you guys were talking about. Can you guys hear me? Yep. Okay, yeah, now that you guys were talking about counterfeit and all that, that's why I believe that it's very, very important having that relationship with God. You know, like he says on the, on his word, get drawn near to me and I will draw near to you. So every day we have to seek him, not just, you know, every, every Sunday or whenever or Bible studies and all that, that's why every day we have to have that relationship with them when we wake up in the morning before we eat, you know, thank him for our food and always try to read his word and all that, and the more we know him, the, the less, you know, people will will know more of him and they won't, it won't be that easy to fall into other false teachings or religions. Yeah, so that's, that's like the best, best thing we can start by doing.
Yeah, I, I agree completely with that, that it's a it's a knowledge, a relationship that is ongoing and that relationship and that is what guards against those, like you said, those false teachings and and it's a continuous thing. Yeah, I like that a lot. Oh, I see one comment here, humility keeps being brought up throughout James, yes it does. That was one of those themes that were, that are throughout for sure. Yeah. Yeah, what do we could move into chapter four with the submission and then the, yeah, friendship with the world, what do you guys got on those first, that first section in, in chapter four here?
I, I, I think it's interesting that, I mean, even, even verse one right there. In the ESV, it says, what causes quarrels and what causes fights among you? Is it not, is it not this, that your passions are at war within you? Like that, that double mindedness that we all have of, you know, we, we, we may be seeking and even, even at times claiming to be seeking fellowship, fellowship with, with God, but our, our earthly desires and passions and stuff run counter to what, what that true desire should be. And, you know, just said, just that, just that double, double focused, you know, that double focus, double mindedness, you know, makes me think of the, the house divided can't stand.
Like your inner, inner self regarding divide, division.
Yeah, yep.
Right. Yeah, that's, and then, I mean, that moves right into this, you know, submission is that I mean, what's the, what's the step there, what's the, what's the remedy? I see you again, Jason.
Yeah, well, again, I think, I think it, I think it still go, I think it goes back to just like what we were, we were talking about and what Felipe was saying, was that it's just a ma- a matter of, of of that constant, that constant refocusing, you know, which again comes back around to taking every thought captive, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's part, that's part of the, part of the tools to use for sure. Scripture, good scripture reference to use. Yeah, I, I think that the, yeah, it says, don't they come from your desires, that battle within you, you want something but don't get it. You kill and covet, but you cannot have what you want. What I want, that's where I think that the submission is really gets to the check and balances, you know, is my, is my inner being warring with itself because I, I claim to be following Christ, but I'm really following the selfish desires of my own heart? You know, is that, you know, that's a good check, can be rough to actually honestly answer. Yeah, that's, that submission to, to his plan for sure. Yeah, and it moves into the friendship with the world. To me, that's can be the opposite of submission to God's will for sure. What do you guys got around, maybe signs of friendship of the world that we have now, you know, what do we, what do we see that look like today? Is that, is that different than it, than it's ever been, or is that the same, just masked differently, what do, what do we, what do you guys thoughts around friendship with the world?
Nothing is new under the sun, so it's gonna come around and around, but it may be like you say masked in this generation and, and this time. People are trying to normalize sin to, to numb it down. And then judging you very much if you stand up for it, so, you know, there's, there's a difference there. But absolutely, I think I, I see it a lot and anything that's going against God is going for the devil. So see that.
Yeah, your, your example of the, did you say minimizing sin or?
Yeah, yeah.
Or normalizing, maybe you said that?
Normalizing and, and yeah, kind of dumbing it down, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, that's powerful, I hadn't, that, I hadn't written that down, well, maybe it's in selfishness or whatever, but pride, but you know, like that most people would say is, well selfishness isn't great, but they might say, but it's okay to, you know, go for whatever you want for yourself, well, that's kinda, you know? So normalizing that sin behavior, I think that is a, that's a great example of current trends of friendship with the world for sure. What other, what other ways you guys see that?
Sorry, when I'm on the streets ministering to people, I find years ago, we were to go back into the seventies and eighties and stuff like that, if you were to talk to people and say, do you think you've ever sinned in your life? They would say, oh yeah. Nowadays, you say that to somebody and they go, I don't think so. It's really interesting how it's totally changed.
Right.
You have to get around that.
Yeah, or, yeah, I think it's like a, what do you think, you think it's like a lack of? I guess some people would say, you know, a lack of a, a moral code that anybody has to follow or
Conscience, yeah.
Right. Or why, why can somebody else say something's wrong and that's not, you know, right for me, whatever, you know, it's probably a mixture of all that mess. Yeah, those are all strong examples of friendship with the world. Yeah. Who else has some ideas on that?
Yeah, that, well, I mean, it kinda comes back around to, to relativism and well, that may be your truth.
Right.
There's no moral absolutes.
Right, right.
Right.
It reminds me of in Revelation when he's talking to the church in Laodicea and they're lukewarm. And they're neither hot or cold, they're just, they're kind of fence riders, they straddle the fence with a foot on each side and so he's about to spit them out, he doesn't want them to be that way, he doesn't want them to be lukewarm. And I think that goes with being compromised or, or normalizing sin or double minded, those all kind of seem like they go together.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, I like that, you know, that lukewarm. Yeah, not one way or the other. And, you know, I think that the world, you know, like you were saying Donna, there's normalized it, they've minimized it, they've made it relativism. And that's a definitely friendship with the world, with the evil one, and against, against God for sure. Where was that verse I was gonna read? Anyone, yeah, verse, second part of verse four, anyone who chooses to be a friend of the world becomes an enemy of God. That's, that's, that's powerful, that's, that's strong, that's a, that's a firm stance. Yeah.
I think sometimes the world doesn't really have a complete understanding of God, I, I saw a guy get out of a car the other day, had a T-shirt on the back of it, said, God forgives, I don't. And, and then I look at that and, and, and I wonder, you know, do you really know the Bible, do you really know God or, you know, are you, you just you know, in an area where, you know, it just seems okay to say that, cause you really, you really don't know. And I, I think, you know, ignorance isn't really the thing, but I think there's a lot of ignorance in, in the world, the people that aren't looking into the Bible in learning things.
And we actually talked about that this morning. How can you, how can you? How can you expect God to forgive you if you're not forgiving somebody else?
And, and that's true.
Why do you think you deserve to be forgiven but that other person? Cause actually in Matthew eighteen too, it talks about you know, the guy pleading with his master to give him time to pay his loan back. And the master forgives the whole loan, ten thousand bags of gold, we're trying to figure out how much that was, but
It was a lot.
And he goes out, he goes out into the street and the guy owes him, you know, like a half a bag of silver. And he wants to throw him in jail because he's not gonna forgive that, cause he hasn't paid his debt back when he just got forgiven all this massive amount of debt. And then the master turns around and says, well, your debt's no longer forgiven, which kinda really makes you think, okay, God forgave me, but now I'm not forgiving anybody else's, is he gonna take his forgiveness back?
And that would have been a good conversation starter i- if I, you know, didn't think he was kinda burly looking. You know, to go up and, you know, ask him, you know, that about, you know, forgiveness, and then I could have seen, you know, where he really kinda thought about God and where he was getting his opinion from or, you know, cared to wear that T-shirt like that, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's powerful, I mean, like Dean was saying, we had that, we had a pretty lengthy discussion around that and the one thing that we, about that forgiveness with a guy who, we decided that even if they were very small bags of gold, there were still many bags of gold, so it was a lot. But he, he didn't ask for his debt to be canceled, he just asked for patience so that he could pay it. And the master gave him the full forgiveness, which we thought was a powerful part of that parable too. So, yeah, pretty, pretty cool. So I guess the idea regarding friendship with the world, I mean, that idea of, you know, getting to, I mean, we talked about this a little bit today too Dean, you and I about, like, seeing people's potential versus seeing, you know, and the way that they're made in God's image and, and that as a child of God versus the way that I might judge them or something, you know, for whatever reason.
Yeah, judge them on their potential and not on their past, cause their potential is how God sees them.
Right, and I think one of the less, I mean, it's real obvious friendship with the world, guys who are murdering people, whatever that is, but I think a little bit more subtle way is that judgment or that lack of forgiveness for somebody, that's where you can really start to see you know, the more, the smaller ways that might be really taken root in yourself, like if you, you know, doing self-reflection, like that could be a that could be a real thing to have to kinda dig up and get out of there.
I think it's super prevalent now with social media the way it is, you know, everybody's been wronged and everybody wants to judge everybody for every little thing that they do. While they've got a zillion skeletons in their own closet, but they're just not out there yet.
Yeah, reminds me of the log and the speck. Yeah, that, that story of the, for those that might not know, the log, you're looking at somebody else's speck in their eye and you
That actually came up last week in this study.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I missed out last week, I tried to watch most of it, but I didn't get through it all. Yeah, other ways, friendship with the world, maybe some I mean, it is pretty strong warning, like we said.
So the, the, yes, I've got the ESV and the, and the New Living Translation both open right here, and both of them actually, actually say in that, in that later part of verse four, they both, they, they're both worded the same a- and it says, if you want to be a friend of the world, you make yourself an enemy of God.
Oh.
So, I mean, that's, that's even a little bit stronger wording than the NIV that you're reading. You know, it's, it's you make yourself an enemy, it's not, it's not that you become one, it's you make yourself an enemy. You know, and so that's, that, that, that's per, that's pretty powerful. And yeah, you know, the, that whole Yeah, you know, the, that whole. It, it, it just puts a, puts a different, different little bit of emphasis on it of how seriously God, God takes all that.
Right. So what, what about the opposite? If you, if you hate the world, does that mean you're? What would that mean? And friend of God? I guess, how do you? Anyone who chooses, I was just curious about, you know, like if the, if the opposite of that is true, then, you know, I think that you can. Hating the world. I guess would be strong, in my opinion. Like I, I think that there's still gotta be some um. Love the, you know, hate the sin, love the sinner. Has to be true. Cindy liked that one. I saw you move on that one. You know, like, how do you, how do you balance those things?
Yeah, that's the way I see it too, because um, we live in the world, so we, we, he's not telling us to hate the world, like. Because we gotta live in it, but we always have to put our eyes, set our eyes on Jesus, then we, you know, we're gonna. Be living in this world, so just as long as we do everything, like follow the rules of the world and all that, as long as we don't put our. Like our, everything to this world and, you know, we're okay as long as. We're always setting our eyes on Jesus, but living in this world. That's how I see it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the scripture of um, you know, be in the world but not of it. Yeah, is, is very accurate in that for sure, and exactly what you were saying. I like that.
I think that, you know, the Bible does say that for God so loved the world. Um, it's the things of the world that we're, we're looking at, you know, it's, it's like. Well, of course, we need to love all the people in the world. Um, even if they're doing something horribly against God or what we hate. We still need to love that we hate what they're doing. And I think that's the way God is with us. He will never quit loving us. He may hate what we're doing, when we're doing, you know, when we're in sin. But he loves us. So we kind of need to remember that, that he did make this world. He. He loved the world, but not the things of the world. Um, and he. In the word here, he's describing in both of these things that we read. What the things of the world are really, you know, and, and, and in the things they mentioned before that we were just talking about. In um, James uh, three. The things that he mentioned there before, the jealousy and the this and the that and the, you know, all that. Um, those are like things of the world and um, there's many more, but we're just dealing with this. Area of the scripture right now. So I think we just need to remember that, because if people say like we. Hate the world, it just sounds like you'd hate everything in it, you know, so anyways.
I like it.
It has a note that says, see uh, Hosea three, one, and Hosea three, one, as the Lord said to me, go show your. Love to your wife again, though she is loved by another man and is an adulteress. Love her as the Lord loves the Israelites, though they turn to other gods and love the sacred raisin cakes. It's kind of like, hate the, hate the, don't hate the sinner, hate the sin. Love the person, don't love what they're doing.
Well, if you. To God, we're committing it. Go ahead.
Oh, you, you're, you're fine, Donna.
I was just thinking, to God, we're committing adultery when we're mixing in with the world. And what we're doing, you know, the, the evil things of the world. It's like committing adultery, like it. It's like adultery, actually, we're putting something else in, above him. And um, he does not like that. He's, he says he's a jealous God. Which is weird, because we're not supposed to be jealous, but.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that, I mean, even wrapping back around to, to for the forgiveness side of things. Um, Hosea is, eh, the whole book of Hosea is really, really pretty amazing about. You know, because. The Hosea, Hosea is representative of God and his, his, his prostitute wife. Is, is representative of, of Israel and how they, how they hoard themselves out. After other, after other gods and, and, and the world system and stuff like that. And, and how God instructed Hosea. To continually go back and forgive her. And, 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 you know, at, at one, at one point, he, he basically. Sold everything that he had to buy her back out of, out of a, out of a situation of slavery. Which is, is a prime example of what Jesus did for us.
Right.
So, you know, it's, it really is a, it really is a great, great study on, on forgiveness. Just on its own.
The book of Hosea is what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point in that um. That, you know, John three sixteen, which is what we were talking about, God so loved the world. You know, that was why he sacrificed, was willing to let Jesus walk through that to be the sacrifice for, for our sins and that. You know, coming down here through, you know, we're starting in verse seven, submit yourselves then to God, resist the devil. And he will flee from you. Like I, I could keep going to eight, but just stopping at verse seven, like. You know, and if then, or um, Will talks about math equations, but resist the devil and he will flee from you. That's. That's powerful. I seem to, I seem to walk around a lot of days not. Living with that lens on, you know, like resist the devil and, and he's gonna flee. That's, that's what it says, you know. Um, you know, be strong in that, use that as a, as a mantra or whatever you want to remember it as. You know, um, and then go into verse eight, come near to God and he will come near to you. Wash your hands, you sinners, and purify your hearts, devil-minded, grieve, mourn, and wail, change your laughter to mourning, and your joy to gloom. Humble yourselves before the Lord and he will lift you up. Those are some, you know, through the end of ten there, those are some strong, some strong words. I mean, how do you? You know, he, Will was asking this question, how does that fit into the submission? Um, what are you guys thoughts around that? Submission to God's will and his ways?
I had something that I wrote down.
Yeah.
Um, a couple of things, actually. Um, one, what Felipe was saying earlier, I wrote down John fourteen twenty-seven. I do not give as the world does. And so like, to be able to discern. Um, true wisdom and false wisdom. If we are walking with God daily and consistently and, and holding his hand through life. Um, we will be able to discern like, that he doesn't give as the world does and that it's not our job. To look at people's intentions, which is just see them as a person, that God forgave us all. For the things that we've done, my sin might look prettier than someone else's, but in his eyes, it's equal. Or um, the submission one, I wrote down Matthew twenty-six when he said, take this cup away. Unless I drink it, may your will be done. So he was submitting to God in something that. He didn't necessarily want to do, um, but he had to do it and, and he did it for us. And so. Um, when you were talking about. Um, James four nine. When he says that you're mourning and things like that, like to submit yourself to God is like living like Christ did. Um, throughout Matthew. I think there's like, Dean, Dean and I were talking that. There's a lot of um, parallel things between Matthew and James and um, how all of that kind of connects that. Gosh, life is so hard, but we don't have to make it hard, like love God and love people, but. It's so much easier to love God than it is to love people because. We tend to look at people's intentions and then we see God as a perfect loving. Character, you know, but he actually is living on inside of all of us and. We can love people for who they are because Christ forgave us all for the same things.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, that's excellent. Some of what I wrote down was real similar to yours about that four nine is um, a focus shift to the reality, reality of eternity. And then real stakes at hand and um, you know, of the second coming and then the consequences of sin and that the cross was needed. You know, like the reality is, you know, we each sin and pull and short and that, but like you were saying that the, you know. This submission to the Lord and, and to his forgiveness and that availability of that gift is uh. Is there and to live, to live through that lens for sure. Who else has something on that?
I didn't really understand it when I first read it, but I've, I've got a study Bible and um. It, it makes it clear when it says to um, grieve, mourn and wail like. You um, change your laughter to mourning and in the study Bible, it says, you know, because you're, you know, sorry for your sins. Is why you're, you're doing that. And then it says, um. Where did it go? Um, okay, grieve and mourn and well, sincere for your sins. And don't be afraid to expose deep heartfelt sorrow for what you have done. And humble yourself. So, I mean, I, I learned that, that was something that I took away, because I, I really didn't understand that till I read further in the. Bible, why I would have to turn my laughter into, you know, grieving, so. I, that's good.
But that's the excellent point. And I like how you used your, using the study Bible as a tool, you know, to help you, help you understand that. That's a good. A good lesson to, to use it for sure, cross-reference or whatever, whatever helps you understand that. Uh, yeah.
It seems like the broke, like it's painting a picture of brokenness. And that, that causes them to want to, causes us to want to repent and submit. Because, because we're broken, we're, we've been humbled by what we've done. And we. Realize that we need repentance.
For, for sure. And, and then another thing that, that just kind of just came to me was, was, you know, that. That let there, let there be sadness instead, in the, in the New Living. Um, uh, says, let there be sorrow and deep grief, let there be sadness instead of laughter and gloom instead of joy. And. That just made me think of, like, how. Like when we first get saved. Especially, especially someone that, when they first get saved, that hasn't really. Necessarily lived that super bad life, you know, like they, they've, they've been a decent person and stuff. You know, for, for most of their life and stuff. They, they just don't feel like they've really done anything really bad. They get saved and yeah, they, they. They may not feel quite as much of a, a, an internal transformation as someone that say. Has been a drug, drug addict for years and years and years and years and years and they get delivered. Um, from that and they're, they're more, more thankful, kind of like Mary Magdalene being, being a prostitute and, and. So, so bad, you know, and that she, she had that major massive one eighty shift. Um, but then, as we, as we grow closer to God. We, we realize the, the closer we get to God, we realize how much, how wretched we really were. Um, and, and that's, that's kind of what it may, what it makes me think of is, is that, you know, the. The, the closer I, I draw to him, the, the more I realize how. Crappy I really am in relation to his perfection, even, even though I'm progressively getting better. I almost feel like I'm going backwards because I'm realizing how. How, how, how far I actually really truly still am, even though I've gotten closer.
So how do you, how do you make that uh? Or maybe, maybe, do you, does that help you spur you on or drag you back or, and how do you, how do you navigate that personally?
I, I think, I think it's, I think it's humbling, honestly. It, 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 it's humbling more than, more than anything else because it. It just makes me realize, man, what, how. You know, just makes me realize and think about how, how much he really did do on the cross. You know, how much and, and how. How undeserving I was, even though we know that. He wouldn't have done what he did unless. He considered us worthy of making that sacrifice. And so, yeah, it's just, it's just, it's just humbling. It's, it's super humbling to me.
Yeah. No, I think that, I think it's a great example. I like it a lot. Um, I mean, you've personally like been a. Example of a, somebody who I would say has a friendship with the Lord. Like when you're talking like that, like you're seeing stuff through the lens of other scriptures, which is, which is cool. And I think it's a powerful way to. Help, you know, develop more of that intimacy with, with Christ and with, with God and um. Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's fantastic to, because all, you know, I say it in our men's group on Tuesday mornings a lot, like. You know, the other scripture is still in effect, like it, it all is still accurate, like you have to, like those other things are still there. You have to kind of weigh it through that as well. Um, so I always appreciate when you, when you share something like that, that sees it through all those lenses, so thank you.
Sure.
You don't have to laugh.
Then I just want to say something back to that uh, scripture about submit or ignore the devil and he will flee, flee from you. I wonder the way, the way I see it too, we have to stop, you know, stop feeding the sin. Or feeding the demons or whatever, you know, it's bugging us, because the more we feed them. The more they'll hang out with us, you know, but if we starve it to death, if we starve, send to death, then, you know, they will. They will leave us alone. They will leave us alone. That's why we, we can, you know, keep. Like if we don't like to do anything, like something that's bugging us, if, if we. If we stop doing whatever, you know, try, try hard and stop doing. Pretty much feeding it. It'll stop, it'll, it'll leave us, it'll go away. So the less we feed it, the. You know, the, like, just like the Bible tells us, it'll, it'll flee from us, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good um. I like that uh, the feeding it or the, you know, kind of the taking responsibility for some of that, you know, like if you're, if you're, if you're allowing it to continue to. Continue to go on, but it's also gives some leeway for a process too. Um, you know. Uh, work and, you know, working towards something better with a, with a continuous improvement level. I like that too. Yeah, thanks for sharing that.
It's kind of like with people, if, if someone does something that just bugs the crap out of you, and they know it bugs the crap out of you. You let it bug the crap out of you. If you stop letting it bug the crap out of you, they get bored and stop. Kind of along the same lines, it's, we're not feeding it, we're not feeding into that anymore. And then it goes away. Yeah, not, not, not feed it, not feeding the bullies by reacting to them or, or, you know, feeding, feeding the trolls, so to speak. Um, yeah, yeah.
That reminds me of in the beginning when Donna was saying, uh, I think we were talking about Genesis when. Satan asked him a question, asked Eva question. And then it started with the thought, she started thinking, oh, well, baby, you know, um, and I think like. There's also scripture that's like, uh, but renew your mind by the power of the word. I don't know what scripture that is, but. Consistently stay and the more we get to know who Christ is, like. You know, it's what we're, we're feeding our own minds and, like you were saying, Felipe, um. Uh, it, I just think it like starts with a thought. It all starts in our head, like when. When the enemy comes to you and is trying to, to bug you, it normally starts in your head. You just ask yourself, well, is he right, you know? And then you could go to the word and if you know the word in your heart. Um, then you should be able to discern.
Yeah, because he always tries to find like this little, anything, you know, to grab, grab a hold of you. So if you start paying too much attention to that. Then that's where he, he gets at you, you know, and so we have to start knowing that too, knowing how he works. That way, we, whenever we get those negative thoughts in our heads, then we know how to stop him and, or with the word of God, just like um, Jesus used it. And how he flee from him. So yeah, just use the word of God against him and that's the most powerful thing we can do. Yeah.
And I think the scripture is even said to like pray in the scripture, pray in the spirit. You know, so it's such a powerful thing to be able to pray the will of God.
Yeah, so we gotta praise him in the spirit, so.
I think an important part of that resisting, not feeding is also, like you were saying, Cindy, like the idea of um. You know, what came to my mind was, what am I gonna, what do I need to replace that with? You know, is it a different? You know, is it a different habit, is it different, um, you know, physical like check, whatever it is. Is it um, is it renewing your mind through the scripture so that that is there? Um, as that, as that check and balance, you know, replacing it with the good. Um, so you can start that new thought pattern for sure.
And that's a big thing, Nate, because um, I mean, we talk about evil spirits and stuff and it says in the Bible, you know, we can rip that spirit out. But we better replace it with God or seven, seven spirit, you know, seven evil spirits are gonna come in to replace that. So we, we, we have, we definitely have to replace it with something that needs to be gone.
Right, yeah, yeah, and you're, yeah, you're exactly right, there, that is definitely still true.
Yeah, for sure. And and just, just another, another little, little reference, you know, kind of like along back. Backtracking a little bit to what Felipe was saying too, along, along that uh, along that line, you know. You know, creating those, those new, new patterns and like what you were saying native, replacing, replacing it and and Dean as well. Um, you know, where you've got to replace those, those patterns. Um, you know, e- even, even looking back, back at, at first Corinthians six. There's, there's the, the references to. This whole group of people that will not inherit the kingdom of, of heaven and. What a lot of people get confused on there is, is it says those who practice those things. That's, that's like a habitual. What, what you, it's like, it's like those escapism kind of things where you just go back and go back and go back and go back. And, and you're not making active. Effort to change course and go a different way. Um, and so. It's, it's, it, you've got to have that element of, of creating those new, the new thought patterns and new pathways and stuff like that in your. In your actions and again, actions and thoughts and everything else. Um, and right, right back to the, taking every thought captive. Um, and then bringing it all under the authority of, of Christ.
Right, submitting your, submitting your will to, to Christ's will. Um, daily. That was kind of my main. Overall takeaway, I mean, we're talking about the true wisdom, false wisdom, you know, seeking that true wisdom. Um, kind of measuring or screening, filtering wisdom through that so that you know. You know, the, the differences and then that, what is that, what does that look like? That submission, you know, daily submission, we've talked a lot about, you know, daily, that relationship, you know, what is that really? Look like through humility and um. You know, like you were saying, Jason, that um, how strongly you need the cross, you know, personally and each of us. Yeah, just. For me, it's that daily choice of. You know, like, you know, yeah, I have these ambitions and goals and whatever, but you know, the reality is. Like, if I'm submitting my will to God's will daily in that, in that relationship, I think that's where the. That's where it really. Where you start to really build your, build your. Fortification up to just like be able to fight back against the evil one to, you know, to build that relationship to, to start all that. And to me, you know, that submission part. And being on board with and your actions showing that every day is, is the uh. Is where that rubber is really on the road.
And I think it came up, didn't it come up last Tuesday, Nate? Uh, Tuesday morning, I think you were questioning uh, praying for favor. You know, is that.
It was last Tuesday, I wasn't there, but.
Oh, no, it was a Tuesday before.
Okay, I don't remember.
Or maybe, maybe someone else was just praying for favor, but the piece that was missing is, is. Yes, we can pray for favor, but is that favor in line with what God wants from us? You know, and not just our own thoughts and like, oh yeah, I want this and this and this. And actually even, Cindy and I were talking about this, it's actually farther down in here about boasting about tomorrow. And kind of like, oh, we're planning all this stuff out. And then God kind of laughs at us and says, yeah, that's funny, you know.
Right, that's next week.
You're not following me.
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, you're, I mean, you're exactly right, that pray for favor and that um. I mean, I think, and I don't, there's nothing inherently wrong with that or praying for the blessing. I think that we're, we're, yeah, it's, and it might be easy.
I think it gets, gets back to the heart.
Right.
Why, what, what are you trying to accomplish? What are you praying for favor for? Is it just for you? Is it for? God's glory, is it for?
Is it so you can hang on tomorrow? Or is it so you can, you know, if you're talking about financial blessings, it's so that you can, you have a plan that might help you really. Let that go through you to, to be a conduit to somebody else. Yeah, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I want to win the lottery, but not so I can have all this stuff, but so I can bless so many people.
Right, and being okay if you don't. Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Anybody else have any, kind of, we're kind of winding down the last few minutes here. Does anybody else have any overall takeaways they want to throw out for us to all chew on?
Well, no, the only other thing that I, that I kind of thought of too, what, you know, kind of kick, again, kicking back to that last little bit with. With, with Felipe and, and, and changing, changing those thought patterns and, and all, and all of that stuff is. Is making sure that we have accountability partners to where we, we have somebody when we, when we come under that. Where, where we come under temptation for whatever it is, you know, if, if alcohol is a struggle for you. Um, uh, and, and you're, you're in a situation where you're, where you're tempted, tempted to. To crack open that, crack open that bottle or whatever, that you've got, got somebody that you can, that you can call. Or text or whatever, that, that's going to help you make a better choice. Um, so just so we're not trying to take that on ourselves, you know, some, you know, that, it may be, it may be porn for somebody. It may be overeating for somebody, it may be, like I said, it may be alcohol, it may be. Um, some other self-destructive habit of, uh, or something like that, that. That is that escapism sin or whatever it is. Um, but. If we, if we can have somebody that we can reach out to in those, in those situations of temptation to go the wrong way. Um, we're going to be more likely to be successful in making those right choices.
Right, I guess, I think that's powerful, Jason, that kind of calling of um. You know, do life with other people, you know, in short, you know, yeah, it needs to go deeper than that, but the first step is, you know, getting, getting in community with other people. Is key for sure.
Um, something stood out to me and whenever you were talking a little bit ago, Nate, I was thinking about being sanctified. And how in first Peter says, pure gold put in the fire comes out of it. Proved pure, genuine faith put through this suffering comes out, proved genuine. When Jesus wraps this all up, it's your faith, not your gold, that God will have on display as evidence of his victory. And so, that, that was really good, because even though. We could say to love people and love God, it's like I was saying earlier, it's not always easy to love people and that. It kind of hurts sometimes to do the right thing and, and to be sanctified just means to give God the glory.
Right. Yeah. It is seven thirty. Does anybody else have anything they want to add before we kick off the recording and hang out for a little while? Welcome, Maggie. I see your note there. Thanks for chiming in. Anybody else?
Thinking, uh, how could we like, how could we apply all of this to our week going ahead and, and what could we look forward to next week, you know?
Yeah.
Um, does anybody have any thoughts on like? Are you gonna go to work tomorrow or, you know, how are you gonna take on your day tomorrow, given um, the study that we're going to?
Just gonna keep doing what I'm doing. I don't have a lot of friends, I don't do a whole lot at the moment. So, I'm not gonna be friends with the world.
That's right. Welcome home, Tammy, 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 am I saying your name right?
Yes, you are. Just don't call me tomorrow, it's too late.
You can consider us your family.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead first before me.
Yeah, we just got to pull, like you said, to look forward to this week. Always, we got to remember to put, you know, try to read his word every day, put. Pray before we start everything every day, that way we can put him first on all we do. And uh, whenever we get tempted by anything, I believe we should always go run to, like uh, Jason was saying too. Uh, you know, we have to go to someone and I, I believe the best place to go to or the best thing to go to is. The word of God, because that's what keeps us strong, like he says, his word is life, so. Anytime we are in trouble or we feel lonely or for anything, when we read his word, his word, it feeds our soul, so. That's probably like the best thing that we can run to. And then after that, you know, someone close to you or whatever, so, you know. So.
Right.
I really agree with you.
Yeah.
Although I was gonna say, because, I mean, not everybody, that's really hard, not, not everybody really has somebody to go run to. And to be honest with you, um, I, I'm somebody, I don't have somebody to run to, so the first thing I run to is my Bible.
Yeah, that's.
So it's true.
Bring that the best thing to the, to the, yeah.
Yeah. Like for me, it's that idea of starting off my day, like you were saying, Felipe, like. With the idea of how's that, how's that submitting to God's will and authority and um, how's that look today, right now? You know, like, working on that for sure.
Yeah.
Anybody else got anything? Cindy, you wanna, you wanna pray for us, pray us out and we'll stop the recording?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Dear Lord, thank you for this evening and thank you for giving us community and friends that we can consider family. Um, we just pray, Lord, that as we go about our week. Um, that you give us eyes to see what you want us to see and ears to hear what you want us to hear. Um, I just pray, Lord, that uh, your favor is upon us this week and that we can all go through this week. Healthy and um, to gain perseverance, even when it's hard or it hurts or that, that we do it um, in your name and for your glory. Um, I pray all of this in your mighty name, and do as you say in the prayer, amen.